I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, entertain a motion on the agenda as proposed or amended.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask if we could, there was an item at 7A about the personnel requisition for the financial assistance analyst. I was wondering if we could table that for a week or so. I didn't get a chance to review that till late Sunday and had some questions then from Michelle and Grant as well. So if that's all right with everyone?
Is that all right with everybody?
Make that amendment?
I'm fine with that.
So I'll make a motion then as amended.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody either in the boardroom or online that wishes to address the board on something that is not an agenda item, please do so at this time. All right, seeing none, we will move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county order to be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $410,174.83. And the 60-40 fund, we're paying $3,313.44. Everything appears to be in order. Are there any questions? Didn't have any larger unusual things today.
All right, any questions, Board? All right, hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. We will now move on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. This week, our crews are starting to haul a lot of the Mile Rock for the gravel roads. They're also starting to remove some of the final pieces of the plow frame. So officially switching over to our summer operations, which is nice to see. Also, last week, we did start to do some controlled burns on some of the road sides with our IRVM program. So it's exciting to see some kind of new and different activities being utilized to just maintain the road sides. Construction also does continue on our bridge for Cedar Ropsie Road. They're starting to set some of the final deck form work to get the deck poured on that one hopefully here in the next few weeks. Any questions? Let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Morning, Board. My name is Meyer, HR Director. Really quick, so we're getting ready for open enrollment, which is May. And we are getting ready to launch the online benefit enrollment process through EASE. So I just want to give a little update that anybody who is on a benefit or uses our benefits will be required to actually go in, log on, and confirm. So it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past. If you don't have any changes with open enrollment in the past, we've said you don't need to do anything. We really want people to maximize the platform and kind of check their information for dependents and beneficiaries and make sure that they're going in there just confirming that's what they want to continue for their elections under our benefit plans. So that'll be kicking off May 1st through May 30th. We'll have more information to come. Just a reminder, the department head meeting is tomorrow at 9:00 AM. It is virtual. So I'll send that update to the Board and to department heads if anybody would like to attend. Jen Todd, our Payroll and County Manager, will be talking about the time and attendance system that's going to be rolling out later this, well, now through kind of the next couple of months. And then I'll also be talking about the online open enrollment process. So any questions at all?
After this year, will folks still need to go on annually?
We're kind of debating on that. We're going to see how it works this year. But at least this year, they'll have to, for sure, do it just it being a new system and to get everybody to have access to their benefits. But we'll see about going forward if that's really necessary.
Okay, very good.
Yep, thanks.
All right, any other department heads, either in the room or online, which provided an update today? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from April 9th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution. Unless there's anything anybody wishes to pull out to discuss or debate.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, we moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution carries. And next, we'll move on to item seven, other business. This is item B. This is a motion that the travel request for Andrew Grimm to attend the DEFCON Cyber Security Conference in Las Vegas, Nevada, scheduled for August 8th through 11th, 2024, at the estimated cost of travel of $2,826, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same as recommended by L U I T Director.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Any questions for me?
I don't think so.
Are you, he's just the only person going?
Yeah, he's the only person going, yep.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, the resolution, uh, motion carries. Next is item C. This is a resolution with the tax sales certificate assignment for five vacant lots, parcel 8913-24-159-006. Certificate 2009001155. Owner Charles H. Miders. Certificate 201000943. Owner Michael G. Thomas. And 8913-24158-011. Certificate 2009001154. Owner Roosevelt Robbie. And 8913-24303-009. Certificate 2016000739. Owner Roosevelt Taylor. And 891324303-018. Certificate 200700122. Owner Maxine Scott, located in Waterloo, Iowa pursuant to Section 446.31 of the Code of Iowa, be approved and said certificate purchase sale be assigned to the City of Waterloo as presented by Linda Hinsman, County Treasurer.
So moved.
Second. So it moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
You want to speak?
I dressed up and everything, so I should.
I know, yeah, that's what I thought.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us today. I'm Noel Anderson. I'm the Community Planning Development Director for the City of Waterloo. As you may be aware, the City of Waterloo has been vigorously going after blighted properties through the 657A program, trying to clean up our neighborhoods, trying to improve our neighborhoods with new investment. The Walnut Neighborhood is one of our target areas that we started a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. With these being vacant lots, we can't go after them through 657A. So we're trying to go through them through the tax sales certificate process. The Walnut Neighborhood started out, originally, the city gave Habitat five lots and two homes. To date now, Habitat has built 18 new homes in Walnut, 14 rehabs, 15 critical repairs, $75,000 investment into a church to try to find a new use for it. So they've invested about $6.5 million in the partnership through Habitat and the city in this area. So we're obviously trying to bring this neighborhood back. We're trying to use this model on the Church Road neighborhood, which is probably about six times the size of this one. So appreciate any help you can give us in acquiring some of these properties to get new homes built in the area and bring investment back into these older neighborhoods.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, I would say that I love everything that I've seen going on in the Walnut Neighborhood the past number of years. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution carries. This is item D. This is a resolution to compromise offered in the amount of $100 for each parcel by the City of Waterloo on taxes owed for five vacant lots, parcel 8913-24159-006. 891 and 8913-24-303-007. And 8913-24-158-011. And 891324303-009. And 891324303-018, located in Waterloo, be approved, Waterloo, Iowa, be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Delka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. This is item E. This is a motion to approve and authorize the board chair to sign the encroachment agreement with the City of Waterloo to allow the county to build and maintain a bus stop structure near the Pinecrest Building at 1407 Independence Avenue, which encroaches upon the City of Waterloo right-of-way property.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, the motion carries. This is item F. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 AM on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed transfer of real estate described in the respective plat as surveyed by Aaron L. Mueller on survey data, March 11th, 2024, to the City of Cedar Falls, Iowa, as part of the City of Cedar Falls, Cedar Heights Area Reconstruction Project, RC-092-3271, as recommended by Michael Tridden, Assistant County Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. This is item G. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:00 AM on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number 147, amendment to the zoning ordinance number 36 to address changes to floodplain regulations, apply updated FEMA flood mapping, and make related changes as required to remain in good standing with FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program, as recommended by Michael Tridden, Assistant County Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a motion. All is in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. The motion carries. This is item H. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing slash bid opening to be held at 9:05 AM on May 6th, 2024 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Iowa, for janitorial services at the courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Pinecrest, 10407 Independence Avenue. The juvenile court services located at 81H Lafayette and portions of the sheriff's office located at 225 East 6th Street, all located in Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, motion carries. This is item I. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing slash bid opening to be held at 9:07 AM on May 6th, 2024 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for waste disposal services at the courthouse, 316 East 5th Street, Pinecrest, located at 1407 Independence. Juvenile court services located at 18 Lafayette. And sheriff's office located at 225 East 6th Street, all located in Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This is item J. This is a motion that hiring professional services for the courthouse, jail, and Pinecrest HVAC upgrade project, as recommended by Rory Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Rory, any questions?
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. This is essentially the same request that we had put for, for the Health Department Clinic and VA removal. Basically, it's to hit our timeline requirement from the ARPA funds for the end of the year. So I'm just asking the Board to allow me to hire professional services to get this project up and going.
And I think you talked about this use of the funds, source of funds with.
Yes, this would be the, use the expense category, I believe, lost.
Actually, I think we're planning to use the lost revenue for the professional services so that he can go ahead and get them under contract.
Got it. But the, that's for engineering and all that stuff.
Design only.
But the project itself is going to be scored and.
Yep.
Okay.
It's just to meet the timeline a little bit, I think, to speed it up too, right?
Absolutely, yep. I've spoken with the local engineering group that we're looking at and they assured me that if we can get this going, that we would have contracts signed by the end of the year. And this would be one of the last big ARPA projects to get, to get signed up before the end of the year, so.
And this is coming from lost revenue. Does this, we've got some wiggle room? We've got enough room in that to cover this and not impact other projects?
Yes, I think so today, yeah. We're, our estimates now have exceeded the expense category ARPAs. So we're, some things have to be paid with lost revenue anyway. So this seems to make sense to go ahead and do this and make sure you meet the deadlines.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to item eight. This is work session, discussion, possible board action consideration, all aspects of the fiscal year 25 Blackhawk County budget.
I, yeah, I was going to say.
I don't necessarily have a presentation for today. You would pass those down to the supervisors. I, these are your, the sheets we've been working with all along, just updated for final numbers. And if anybody has questions or anything else you want to discuss, I need one more down there, I bet.
I think, and I'm happy to jump in this because I know I mentioned it in the email as far as the information that we'd all just, is there one extra or is that?
Oh, it's, yeah, there is one extra. It's Tom's, we can.
Oh, I was going to say.
Hold it up for him.
Like anything new.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking.
And last week, when we talked about whether or not we'd be bonding, I think, was kind of the bond versus the fund balance. And it was those capital programs, there are projects, I guess, that are in that list. And I don't know which page that'd be because I'm.
I didn't, I didn't give capital stuff today. There were so many pages, but I can put it up on the screen.
Yeah, the screen ought to be enough then, that's fine. Because I thought the concern or the interest I had in, in was because of those projects. And we talked on it just briefly, but it was that some, the timing of people's projects and what departments wanted to do things and when, and how that would be impacted by whether it was bonding or using reserves. And so some of those were rather large. Obviously, we've got Mike here today. I was going to say to talk about the conservation ones and some timing of his projects. Rory's got some, I think, in there too. Kathy, I knew, had a large list in the engineering ones. Oh, I'll wait till you get them up there before we.
Just looking at the one year.
Yeah, just for the 25, yeah. Unless, I mean, somebody else may want to look at another year, but that was the one that we were zeroing in on kind of for finishing up things. And typically, I know we've always, this has been a different year, but I said typically, we've always kind of gone through those line items just to look at and see if there's any comments, questions, changes, or anybody to have. So I didn't mean for us to have to do that today unless somebody wanted to. But it was to just take a look at those timelines on those important projects and when people were kind of planning their needs so that we could plan accordingly, I guess, Michelle. And Board?
Yeah, and so we can, we can be pretty flexible with this. If we have certain projects that we want to start, should you choose to bond for the portion of them, which I kind of think was pretty much the direction at the last work session. If there are projects that need to move quickly, we can take some action to reimburse ourselves out of bond proceeds with those so we could start. I prefer they wait till July 1st, but we could do that and not issue the bonds until later so that we can contemplate doing the two years at a time if we want to. So.
Well, I know you mentioned an email to us too about the timeline.
Yeah, I think, I do think departments would like, I'm putting words in their mouths at this point, but I think they would like to know if things are approved so they know what to plan for their schedules that they need to work on in 2025. That, that's what I think would be helpful.
Yeah, and that's why I thought that and the timelines for those projects would be helpful. But, and I know you'd mentioned bonding as a process and there was a timeline that we'd have to meet to do that. So that was, I didn't know how much time that was that was needed, but what you were looking at then, if we were going to be doing these projects and trying to tag on to another year or do.
So I would, I would probably wait until later in fiscal '25 to do that. I'd like to get it switched so we're doing that probably in the summertime in the future, but I don't know that we can get it put together that quickly this time around. And plus, we don't, we don't need all the money right now, so I think we could wait a while for that.
And so you're saying then we would, when we ever would bond later, might be later this year? Or I guess it could be this year yet in '25?
Yeah, I would assume we'd want to do it in fiscal '25, although we would not have to.
And, but we wouldn't have to do it July 1?
No.
Wait till later?
No.
And then you say those proceeds would be paid back by bonding later?
Yeah, exactly.
So we can do that.
Yep, so we would just need to know which projects want to move ahead prior to the bond sale. And then we can do something called reimbursement resolutions to allow us to advance the funds for the projects and then be repaid when the bond sale occurs.
Are there any limitations on the resolution, reimbursement, or the reimbursement resolutions?
Apparently not. Just need to jump through the hoops to do that. And I will firm that all up again with the bond attorney. I haven't done that yet because I'm, I've been playing phone tag with some departments. I'm either busy or they're busy because I wanted to look at those time, timeframes to figure out what needed, what we need to move ahead on. But we'll, we'll be able to get that done.
Because I, I support the idea of doing, you know, the bonds every two years to try and find some savings in that, as, as long as we're not having to slow projects down. But if, if, if we can pull from reserves and reimburse, then that's, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I was going to say, at least we've got options, I think, to do that. Because as I said, at June 30th, we may find out our revenue has been considerable too. That's another thing we'd be looking at, I guess, kind of coming in, how we come in at the end of the year.
Yep.
And where we're at is another option.
Yeah, true. Maybe choose not to bond. And, and as you recall, I'm only suggesting we bond for those that are eligible, which, under the new law, that kind of took away some of our authority. That was only about half of what our capital projects want to be. So we are planning to use reserve for the ones that don't qualify for bonding in any event.
What was that again, the, what makes them qualify? Because that was one of the questions I knew I had when you had that column.
There's several code sections to go through. I, I literally just had the bonding attorneys go through that and identify them. Okay. The state legislature did a good thing, but you know, they can't really do a good thing without doing a bad thing at the same time. So they increased our limits about how much we can bond for a specific item before needing a referendum. But with that same action, they eliminated a section of the code that kind of was a catch-all. So anything that wasn't specifically listed, I shouldn't say anything, but items that weren't specifically listed could fall under this catch-all provision. Well, they decided it'd be a good idea to eliminate that. So that's why a lot of our projects won't qualify for bonding right now unless we get the legislature to fix that little problem, which maybe that will happen in the future, I don't know. So equipment is difficult. It is just gone now. That was one of the things that was typically used under that catch-all provision. Some things that are considered more repairs rather than improvements to buildings, the repairs don't qualify. So it's, it's items like, it's items like that that have, will have to be funded. And our choices are either under the general 350 levy, which, as we've all talked about, that may be less of an option in the future. So then you're left with reserves or, which is why I'm hoping if, if our funds continue to perform better than budgeted and we don't need them all for that turnover pool that we've put in place, then that could generate some funding for future capital too. But the exhibit that I showed you, I was being conservative, so I assumed that we wouldn't have anything adding to reserves every year. So I wanted to take how much excess reserves we have today that we feel are too high and how many years would that last if I used it only for the non-bond eligible projects? And that likely gets us through about 20, 30. But there potentially could be issues after that, all based on ifs, you know? If, if the law isn't corrected, if we don't have significant growth in taxable property valuation within Blackhawk County, Noel. So, because those are the things that would help us. Because if we have growth in taxable property value, we'll have room under the 350 cap. And that would allow us to do some of those non-bond eligible projects under the normal operating budget. So those are just a lot of the ifs I'm trying to consider.
That's where those TIF dollars come in.
Make a big difference.
Looking at now when there's such a.
That's where the tax revenue off of that wind project would have been very nice to have right now, but.
That too. You're right, that would have helped, yep.
Well, I was going to say, not that we have to go through line by line, but I would like, I guess, I, to recognize or the projects, if we're all going to go through those, not, not, you know, having to tear them all apart and get more detailed, but to make sure that the staff all knows the projects that we're approving or we have approved in this year so that they can go forward with them and planning.
Yep.
Is there anything, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to it. Mike, do you have anything you want to add, change, correction, or does that list work for you?
Yeah.
And as long as Michelle's saying now that we can kind of borrow.
Yeah, Mike Hinderson, Director of County Conservation. Yeah, and Michelle and I have played phone tag for a week. We've got dates, you know, as far as projects for FY '25 that kind of have drop-dead little windows we have to fit in. And really, the only one is the Hartman Reserve erosion control project. And that's simply because we're working with River Hill School. And we would like to avoid, they're looking at a new resurfacing their parking lot. We would like to get the equipment through there because that's our access. That's our best access to the project. And they've agreed to that as long as we can get that done before they want to do their new parking lot and for obvious reasons. And so that one's in there tight, but that project would need to get started. We, we would want to be under contract and be working on that project probably December of this year. And then the frozen ground benefits everything there from disturbance on the Hartman site as well as River Hill's site. So we're looking at frozen ground to do that, which we can. And really, everything else in there would just, you know, we, we aren't, it's not too critical. If, if approved, the siding and windows on the Rotary Reserve, that's a big, that's a big chunk. Obviously, we have reservations almost a year and a half in advance. But we have a window at this point that we've at least blocked off. If it's approved, then we'll go ahead and cement that in. It sounds like that work can be done during the cold weather period. So we, right now, are looking at a February, March locking off period of 2025. are looking at a February, March locking off period of 2025. So it would be early winter or early 2025 is when we would do that. We've got 60 days in there. If it's not approved and we aren't going to do that, then we'll just open it back up again. But we don't get a lot of rentals during that time period, and that's typically when we go in and do our yearly renovations to that building. Those are the only two that really have a tight timeframe. Everything else doesn't really involve the public, like the roof on the... In Blackhawk Park, that's just one of our maintenance buildings, and that can be worked on anytime. We don't have to worry about the public and when they're there and when they're not and all those kinds of things. So really, that's... Those were the two main ones, so.
Okay. Well, this was before, I think, when you and I even talked to know that you could do that and borrowing against, so that won't hold our projects and that type of thing. So that's great to know that we can just kind of proceed with those timelines. Appreciate it. Thank you. I was gonna... I didn't mean to skip over Rory's, I saw that he has the x-ray machine, but I don't do anything... The amount and what you've got in the project, nothing's changed, and the timeline, whatever, isn't really critical then now for you?
Yeah. My projects are fairly straightforward this year. In fact, many of them, we've already got active bids on just to get the budgetary numbers put together. So not a lot of behind-the-scenes activities going on with these. Yes, the x-ray machine, we actually have a walk-through metal detector that's... That is on this year's list, so after that, we get the x-ray machine, we should be in pretty good shape down there at the security station, so fairly straightforward. The only one that I just haven't had a chance to get with HR on the second exit, I need to probably sit down with Amanda and just maybe look at that number a little harder. But other than that, everything's pretty straightforward for me.
Okay, thank you. Well, some of those, I was gonna ask Michelle, you know, like we have the Board Supervisors renovation in there to the $100,000, but that was gonna be... Well, that wasn't that bonding or could be other. I was gonna say where the $25,000 Rory's talking about was definitely in the fund balance. So anything in the fund balance, I guess, is just kind of when we get to that point and we want to do it or not do it.
Right, exactly. Yep. Timing isn't an issue with those. It really isn't with anything. You just need to do a little planning ahead on the others.
Okay.
Sorry to bring you back up, Mike, but on that Casey Lake, I know we had some additional dollars come in, bids came in a little lower. Seeing that that's in a bond category, that 250 in item 11, is that a piece that we need to move... That you feel like we need to move forward on, or the fact that we had additional dollars and that the bid came in under?
The way things sit right now, we're actually looking pretty good.
Okay.
Now, as long as we don't continue to get weather like we're gonna get today, that contractor, once again, has been really pretty amazing. I mean, they are going... They've been working 12 and 15 hours a day down there in between these rain periods. And we had a construction meeting last week with them. They are at about... They are at about 75% complete now with removal from the lake, probably further than that because they had a good week last week. And once that's out of the way, then they start picking off all the little things along the site. We're gonna know here by... I mean, by the first of July, we're really gonna have a good feel for where they are and how much longer it's going to take them. But again, I hesitate a little to say this, but he was talking about if everything keeps going the way it's going, they may be closing the water control structure in November or December. And if they... If he's that optimistic about how quickly he's moving, we should have a good idea that we haven't run into some large change order along the way, and still, again, we haven't seen anything... There have been no surprises at this point, and I don't know why there would be, but he's moving quickly enough that we've got a good window of timeframe to sit here and say, "I could probably let you know, Michelle, by the first part of July and say, 'Hey, everything looks good. Our numbers look good, we're probably safe.'" So.
Okay. Thanks.
Engineering, I know that's not part of the, like I said, from the tax base and stuff's different too. Any comments or questions or anything you want?
Do you guys have any questions there?
Anybody? Sheriff, how about you? I was gonna say you've got items on there too. Anything that you want to offer, any changes, updates, corrections, timelines, something that's important to just... No? Okay. Thank you.
Are you directing them towards me, Linda?
I direct... I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear you, excuse me.
Tony was actually... He's in the audience, and I just asked if he had anything he wanted to comment on.
The one question mark is on the body camera and car camera, RFP, and it's to Mike now for review, so we've got that finalized and it's ready for legal review at this point.
Okay. So do we have an amount for that? Then...
We had estimated $750,000.
We won't know. I mean, we've... We're kind of estimating some 50, but it'll have to go to bid, so we're hoping it comes in really competitive, but we really don't know, but a good estimate would be some 50.
So I'm just thinking, leaving a question mark in there just to... Heck, yes.
Well, and I...
Throws off totals.
I believe we were considering probably possibly using lost revenue for that. My only... My only concern with that is how we're going to cycle the replacements, because I think those are pretty short-lived items.
Yeah, no, I think we need to be including those and just cover more regular budget process, because it's, as you said, it's an ongoing expense.
It's gonna become that way, I think.
That's, like I said, if there's anything, like say, anybody had questions, it's kind of like we had the hearing on Thursday, so I threw it on, just it was like any chance to... Or opportunity, I guess, to answer questions, ask questions or make changes. Not that it would impact the hearing so much, but to maybe bring it forward that what we needed to address.
Yep. Want to make sure you're ready for Thursday.
I remain supportive of all these projects that have been presented to us.
So the vehicles, the Sheriff's Department's vehicles are bond-eligible, but other vehicles are not?
Right. Equipping... Sheriffs are special, as we all know. Equipping public safety is definitely... No. I don't think I can get it out of my mouth again. So, yeah, there's a special code section that equipping sheriff's offices is unallowable.
Okay.
And one of the questions, I think, or something that came up, I guess, in this last budget cycle and with also a TJ's budget cycle, was one of the sheriff's vehicles. And I... Well, we had some discussion and it was just comments back and forth, I think, too, of what would happen with that vehicle, were we to use it for Health Department or whether or not it would go to Auditor's or Assessor's office and that type of thing. But we don't really need to do any... Pay any attention to that today. It would be something we can discuss in the future, or...
It's in the back lot waiting.
Wait, oh, for a home, huh? Oh, okay.
We know we're not turning it in. We know that it's not going as a...
Not gonna sell it.
Yeah. It's not traded, so...
Okay.
I mean, I haven't been approached by any other departments, asking for interest in it.
The only thing to remember is...
Issues with the car, it sounds like, with its electrical system. There's a slow electrical drain someplace. I think it would be more conducive for where it's... Where we have it earmarked now instead of putting it out of public health. They might have to even... I mean, if a mechanic can't track down the problem, they might have to carry a battery pack in it to start it on occasion. And it sounds like...
Sounds like he may need a vehicle. Sounds like he may need a vehicle in his budget next year.
Yeah. I guess I'd rather give a clunker to accessories than public health.
I know. That's what I was...
Yeah, honestly, yeah.
And we had that... We did that once before, I think, when we had the retirements out of the Health Department, and that's how he got the vehicles, but that doesn't need to... We can discuss it later, I guess, because I'm sure he's got to bring it back. He didn't put it in his budget for a vehicle, I don't believe, this year.
Right.
So that was... I'm fine with... Anybody have any questions or comments about anything else? I'm... That was my... Just wanted to make sure everybody knew what their projects were in the capital list and that you're moving forward with those, then that's great. Glad we can borrow against ourselves, really.
Yeah, so I'm...
From the bonding, because I was... That's what I was fearful of, that projects would need to happen and we'd need to bond, and we wouldn't want to be into that second year when you talked about the two years and good to know that. And it's gonna be... That was gonna be a lot of work for everybody to try to determine what '26 was gonna look like quickly to do it, so thank you.
We have... We do have '26.
I know we have some, but I mean, to fine-tune those numbers and then say what we want to bond for. Okay, thanks. I'm good. Did you have anything, Tom, since you did comment earlier? I'm sorry if you couldn't hear.
No, it's... I kind of voiced my opinion on it. Again, I'm a minority, so I just don't think you budget a... You balance a budget by borrowing money and taking money out of the reserves. It's just me, and apparently I don't have others that agree with me on that, but...
Oh, I wouldn't say that, Tom. I just thought, I think it's early in the process and we've got to do a hearing anyway, but I said we'll look at... Because we really don't have the cost of what that would be, what the cost would be for us to bond, yet that's something you said you could prepare for us if we wanted it, but...
Well, we've taken things out of the operating budgets that for years were in the operating budgets and took them out and put them in capital. And I think it's a good example of, would you give money away outside the budget process? Here we are today. I've always been a strong believer, if you're gonna give money away, it should be during the budget process so we know how we stand first, because there's a lot of dollars out there that could have went a long ways, maybe even stopped us from borrowing money this year.
All right. Was there any further discussion or questions?
I think I did... I want to address why I pulled money out of the operating budget and using reserves, because that was an unusual situation. We did bump into our 350, $3.50 cap this year, so the only reason that I did that was we had... We cut 1.6 million or moved it out from under the 350, and we would have to either find, you know, it's talking about reducing physicians or finding more efficient ways, you know? Don't turn the lights on, things like that. Those are the choices that we really were faced with, and so those are the reasons I'm suggesting this. I guess I would... I know we haven't... I believe you haven't talked much about hitting that 350 cap in previous years, and there is... There was another provision of the law that was changed and removed this year. It used to be that counties could exceed that 350 cap if they just said they had something unusual and needed to do it, but Blackhawk County hadn't happened to need it till this year, and unfortunately, that provision in the law is gone, so it's a different situation than you're probably used to dealing with in the budget.
Do you think this will just be ongoing? I mean, you'll always have to weigh it, I guess, and look at what it is. This is a new year for us doing it, but I said it was...
Right. We will have to weigh it. It will take significant growth, honestly, I believe, in taxable values or some other currently unknown new source of revenue to help us fund our annual increases, because we do have annual contractual increases for employees and, you know, other rate increases. The cost of business does tend to increase, even though you're doing the same things, it can cost more. So it... I think it's... I think the odds are greater than not that we will probably be looking at that every year going forward, which is...